Order? Um, let me see. Okay. Our invocation this morning is being given by Commissioner Welch. And I'll ask Commissioner Seale to do the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for a new day, a day that you've made, and we rejoice, we're glad in it. We thank you for the spirit of progressive Pinellas that has been our mantra for decades, not in a spirit or lens of partisanship, but through a lens of purpose in moving this entire community forward. And we thank you for that spirit of collaboration and of purpose. We ask you to bless this commission in 2020, bless our decision-making, our collaboration, bless our community, those who choose to lead and make a difference to impact our community. We just thank you for the spirit of Pinellas. We pray for all those around our nation and world who are suffering today, pray for your comfort and grace, and we thank you and praise you and give you all the honor, the glory, and the praise in your matchless name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, first up, we have a proclamation for Martin Luther King Day. If y'all would come on up. Good to see you.
Face him now.
Charlie, we're together again. Try not to move into your space.
Good luck, Charlie. Right there.
He's a space person. He doesn't like me. And these are the members of the Clearwater Urban League Coalition, Leadership Urban. Okay, let me start over. Clearwater Urban Leadership Coalition, all together now. And they'll be accepting the MLK proclamation. On behalf of the citizens of Pinellas, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect and just union. Dr. King's teachings continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges and injustice within our communities, including educational opportunity, academic achievement, economic empowerment, and the elimination of poverty. Still working. The King Holiday and Service Act enacted by Congress in 1994 designated the Dr. King Holiday as a national day of volunteer service. Millions of Americans have honored the life and legacy of Dr. King by serving their neighbors and communities on this holiday through service projects that are organized by various nonprofit community, public, and private organizations. The county recognizes that the legacy of Dr. King as it lives on and the tremendous work of many community organizations, including the Clearwater Urban Leadership Coalition, therefore, now therefore being proclaimed by the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners that January 20th, 2020 will be recognized as Dr. Martin Luther King Day. And who's in charge here? Or is this a egalitarian sort of organization? Nobody's in charge.
So we're all in charge. However, nonetheless, we want to thank the county commission, the Board of County Commissioners, for acknowledging us on this day. We feel it is a privilege to be able to serve our community and then to be acknowledged for the efforts. And we do it better when we do it together, is what we always say.
Thank you all for being here. Thank you for the work that you're doing. And I want to give this to you. And I think we'll stay here and have a picture.
Tell you what, Dave.
It's a good wing.
And that's interesting. A part of our leadership team had made her surgery yesterday morning and could not be here, so I wish to acknowledge her in her absence, so thank you.
One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Okay. And next, I'd like to ask Jennifer Libby, Chief Programs Officer and Senior Vice President of Programs, and Kristiana Orr, School-to-Work Coordinator, both with Big Brothers, Big Sisters. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Yeah, I know, I always get that wrong. To join me at the podium. Okay. I'd also like to ask Rodney Marion and Christina Covias. Covias, sorry. Do they even have it spelled out here for me? Both, I'm new at this, both from the Office of Workforce Relations to join me as well. They will be accepting the National Mentoring Month proclamation on behalf of the citizens of Pinellas County. January is recognized as National Mentoring Month, celebrating the benefits of youth mentoring across the country. Each day in communities across the country, caring adults volunteer their time with mentoring programs to create consistent and supportive relationships with young people. Quality mentoring programs are proven to build relationships that help improve school attendance and academic achievement, promote responsible decision-making, and provide skills to better navigate relationships at schools, at school, in social settings, and at home. The Board of County Commissioners has made mentoring an important strategy to invest in communities that need the most, which is one of our strategic plan goals. The county administrator has encouraged Pinellas County employees to participate in various mentoring programs by granting 90 minutes of paid administrative leave each week to conduct these activities. The county has partnered with Pinellas County Schools to place dedicated county employees into classrooms as mentors through various mentoring initiatives resulting in more than 1,300 hours from county employees since 2016. Now therefore being proclaimed by the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners that January 2020 be recognized as National Mentoring Month. And I have a proclamation that I just read, and would encourage you. I hope somebody will say something about the opportunities to mentor.
So we're always looking for qualified mentors in the Pinellas County community. We have several programs at Big Brothers, Big Sisters. We're going to talk about one shortly, School-to-Work, but we also definitely need community-based volunteers and site-based mentors. For just one hour a week, you can really change the life of the child. So we encourage you to go to our website, vbs-tampa Bay dot org, and also look at other mentoring organizations that possibly are in Pinellas County as well. Thank you.
And we continue to encourage employees to participate in these programs. It's just very valuable, and I think everyone gets something out of the program. It's a very rewarding program. It's very satisfying for both the employee as well as the students who participate.
And I assume that Big Brothers, Big Sisters has opportunities to volunteer? Would you like to say anything? No?
So we'd like to thank Big Brothers, Big Sisters for their partnership. We really appreciate it. And a big thank you to all the employees that take the time out of their schedule to volunteer. That's huge. We appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you for organizing all this for our youth. And I have proclamation here to give to someone. There you go. And we'll take some pictures.
It's gonna be a long year.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Come on, Ken, smile.
Obviously, he has the bogey problem.
Next, we have our Doing Things recognition. Oops. Our employees work hard every day to make our community better. In our ongoing video program, we recognize individuals who exemplify dedication to the Pinellas County team, and we have many. It's only through our employees and the excellent work they do that we can fulfill our vision, be the standard for public service in America. Shay Donovan, is that right? Close. Is on a mission to make sure everybody knows where their wastewater goes. It rhymes, too. Can Shay come on up here while I'm talking? All right, thank you. She's on a mission to make sure everybody knows where their wastewater goes and how Pinellas County works to clean and reuse it. She pursues her mission through the education program at the South Cross Water Reclamation Facility. She's grown it by leaps and bounds and now reaches tens of thousands of students and adults each year when they come on tours. Her knowledge as a chemist and sense of humor as an educator has made her a hit among school students across the country. This is true. Yes, you're legendary. With every conversation, each facility tour, and each classroom teach-in, she increases our residents' knowledge about how to maintain our water infrastructure and builds trust in our utilities department. Mr. Administrator, would you join me at the podium? And we're going to have a video that gives us a snapshot of the work that Shay does every day.
Thousands of Pinellas County students know exactly where their water goes when they flush, and Shay Donovan has a wall full of letters from them.
A lot of times, we'll get thank you notes, and sometimes they're really personal. You guys are like the underdogs with all that you do for us. It's freaking amazing with you guys. We would just have piles of poop and pee. You are not only educated, but you are super funny and cool. You made me laugh like 100 times.
Shay shines light on this smelly subject by showing instead of telling. She starts with what should and shouldn't go down the drain, then dives into what happens next.
There's this misconception that there's this pipe that just takes your dirty water out of your house into the middle of the ocean, and that's the end. When they start to see all these processes and they see the brown bubbling water, it's kind of a shocker to them. They never really thought about where their wastewater goes.
In the past few years, Shay has helped double the number of tours, teach-ins, and other events organized through the South Cross Education Program, which now reaches about 40,000 people a year.
What we're doing here in Pinellas County with this education program, there aren't a lot of municipalities in the state of Florida that are doing anything similar. So we get phone calls and emails from them asking us for advice.
Her program links abstract classroom concepts to the gritty, dirty, and critically important world of water treatment. Shay puts her background as an agricultural chemist to work digesting the science of wastewater management into down-to-earth language.
So I have to be really creative when I'm kind of explaining the wastewater process because, let's be honest, wastewater treatment is not sexy. Kids don't want to talk about that. It's ew, it's gross. So I have a lot of various poo emoji paraphernalia lying around because it's such a great conversation starter. Like, kids look at it and they instantly recognize what it is.
Her ultimate goal is for kids and their parents to walk away with a new appreciation for how much the county does to clean and reuse our water.
We're trying to be as transparent as we can by opening our gates and saying, "Come in and see the facility, and let's talk about the science that we do. Let's talk about how we clean your water," and have faith on us because we know what we're doing.
And maybe raise up a new generation of young scientists ready to find even better ways to do one of Pinellas County's dirtiest jobs.
I am Shay Donovan, and I am Pinellas County.
So in other words, you're freaking amazing. Would you like to say a few words? Oh, come on. You have to be funny, though, too. Sorry.
No pressure.
No pressure. Well, first and foremost, I would like to thank my entire department. So I'm just one employee in utilities, and that's about 400 employees. So I almost feel like there's 400 people behind me right now because I wouldn't be here without them. They've taught me everything that I know about this industry, and yes, I have a lot of really crappy jokes, so we're not going to go there. Just for you, I got it. But this is a really cool program that we have. There aren't a lot of municipalities in Florida or even the nation that are doing what we're doing, so they're really watching at what we're doing. So it's cool because we are not only progressive in Pinellas, we're progressive across the entire United States.
Yay.
Well, I just wanted to add to what the Commissioner said. Thank you so much. If you're not creative, how do you reach young people with a topic like this especially? But, you know, but there's a serious point that you're making. You know, there's opportunities for people to get into science. It has an environmental impact at the end of the day, right? And so trying to help and make that connection's not an easy topic, you know, or not an easy thing to do with this topic. So the fact that you make it fun and creative and reach our young people is tremendous, and thank you so much for all that you do.
Well, and hopefully, some of the young people that you're teaching will see, well, you know, we used to bring our leadership kids to see the plant, and some of them, oh, good, we still do. Who knew? And some of them get interested in being a chemist or whatever. You know, there are all kinds of careers there, and I appreciate you highlighting them. All right. And I have a certificate for you, of course, and some pictures to be had.
One, two, three. Hey, it's good.
You worked on it. Thank you so much.
Next up, we have a partner presentation from Big Brothers, Big Sisters.
So in further recognition of National Mentoring Month, we have a video we want to show you about our activities for 2019, and then a brief PowerPoint that will be presented by Christine Covias, who works with me, kind of describing what our goals are and our actual future expectations of the program.
Introduce yourself.
Introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Rodney Marion. I'm the Workforce Relations Director.
We knew that.
Yeah.
In order to achieve the standard in public service in America, Pinellas County employees do their jobs every day, and then some. One way is through employee community involvement, which includes employees mentoring these Clearwater High School students.
Showing our opportunities, you know, like telling us people how, what people do in their job, what is a daily thing every day.
The School-to-Work Initiative, a partnership with Big Brothers, Big Sisters Tampa Bay, gives young people someone to talk to and glimpses into a possible career path.
This program encourages children to learn about the careers that are available in public service and then also see firsthand what those different careers are like. Mentors are motivators and role models within the community. They provide guidance, encouragement, perspective to children who may or may not have a stable support system. So a mentoring relationship could literally be life-changing for the child as well as the mentor.
School-to-work is one of the many ways employee relations, the Board of County Commissioners, and county administration facilitate community involvement. Employees mentor students throughout the year for other ongoing mentorship programs like Lunch Pals, a Pinellas County Schools partnership. Employees also participated in one-day events like the Great American Teach-In and Junior Achievements Our City Day.
Employees are permitted 90 minutes of paid administrative leave per week. So the employee can use that for Lunch Pals, they can use it for the Great American Teach-In, they can use it for whatever initiative that they'd like, as long as they get supervisor approval.
Last year, I became a big sister, and it was incredible. It was not at all what I was expecting. I was a little nervous about it and a little hesitant to sign up, but I am so glad I did.
Students and employees both say they get something from the county's commitment to give back.
I would recommend it to county employees. It's been an experience for me. At first, what I've learned is this understanding your littles, what their circumstances are, where they're about and stuff, and then inspiring them to do better.
It's definitely something that everyone should try. I think no matter what your interests are or what you plan on doing after school and, you know, into the college, I think that it's definitely something that would benefit everyone.
You get a lot out of it. I mean, you're giving, but, you know, usually that's when you give, you usually receive more than you give.
Pinellas County employees serve the public in many ways. Sometimes, the road to first-class public service is paved with volunteering.
Honestly, I am super impressed by our employees that take the time out of their schedule to make the difference in the lives of young folks. We just have a great workforce, and they love to make a difference, whether it be public service or whether it be employee community involvement. Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. My name is Christine Covias, Executive Assistant with Workforce Relations. Just want to make sure, can everybody see my presentation right now? All right, perfect. So as you can see, Pinellas County employees are very passionate about positively impacting youth within our community. Since 2017, employee volunteer hours have increased dramatically, which we attribute to increased mentoring opportunities and employee outreach. We plan to continuously enhance our outreach to employees by utilizing tools such as the video presented today and creative messaging to encourage mentorship. Our goal is to increase the number of employee volunteer hours that we had in 2019 by at least 10% in 2020. So there are multiple benefits to our employees mentoring. It promotes academic achievement, inspires careers in public service, and is a rewarding opportunity to interact with local youth. We partner with several organizations such as Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Tampa Bay, Pinellas County Schools, and Junior Achievement of Tampa Bay. So throughout the year, our office engages employees to participate in various mentoring initiatives. Our most popular ongoing programs are the School-to-Work Mentoring Program and Lunch Pals, as well as one-day annual events such as the Great American Teach-In and Junior Achievement Our City Day. We really appreciate our leadership's dedication to employee community involvement. Not only do you all make it possible for them to do so, you encourage them to do so. So we really appreciate it. We appreciate your vision and your encouragement. It means a lot. So now I'd like to turn over the remainder of the presentation to our partners at Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Tampa Bay.
My name is Kristiana Orr, and I am the School-to-Work Coordinator for Big Brothers, Big Sisters.
And I'm the Senior VP of Programs, Jennifer Libby. So we just wanted to talk a little bit about our partnership with Pinellas County and our School-to-Work program specifically because it's not the program, and a lot of people know normally about Big Brothers, Big Sisters. So we were very fortunate in 2016 to launch our School-to-Work program, and one of the first partners we actually had was the St. Pete Clearwater International Airport, who came onboard with us. And they launched with about 15 students in September of 2016. And so they actually are in their fourth year currently with another cohort of students. So they've served about 30 students. And then we were excited when this past year, Clearwater High also came on with the county administration of Pinellas County. So we actually are working with several different departments. We actually take the students to three different offices, department offices throughout the year, which has been really exciting to showcase. We have about 18 students in that program. They started as juniors, and now they're seniors this year, and they'll be graduating in May. Yay. So that's exciting. But it's been an awesome opportunity to really highlight Pinellas County and all the different opportunities and things that the county's doing. And then this past year, we actually brought on Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, and we actually launched with them this past fall. So they're actually serving 19 students this year in the School-to-Work program. How the School-to-Work program works is basically we have high school littles that we take from a partner high school, and we bring them once a month to a workplace. And they actually are onsite about three hours of time, and the first hour is a educational training or highlighting maybe a department of a corporation or the county, or showing different types of job opportunities. We also do essential skills, interviewing, resume building, career exploration, those types of activities. The second hour, they have a mentor, so that's where the volunteers and the employees come in. We've had amazing mentors here in Pinellas County. So each student is matched with an individual mentor they see each month. So it's an ongoing two-year relationship they have with this mentor they see. And then the third hour... And then the third hour is lunch slash talk time. So that's their time to really talk about what's going on in their lives. The bigs are helping them with their goals. We, all the littles set goals over the course of the year, the things that they want to work on. And ultimately, our goal is that they will graduate from high school and have a plan for the future. And we've already seen that with, with our graduating classes, which has been so exciting. We really, we were happy that 100% of our kids have graduated who completed the program. We currently have 14 sites across three counties and we're always looking to expand. So if you know any business partners who might be interested, it's really been an awesome program and I know the students have greatly benefited. We have so many great partners. We just wanted to shout out to Shay is one of our wonderful partners, who's been gratefully helpful. Christine's been awesome. Carla and Megan, also Michelle at the airport was incredible. And then our new partner with the sheriff, Joanna, Ricky, and, and Jennifer have been amazing. So we're very fortunate. We appreciate all of the support and we look forward to expanding our program even more so in the coming years. So thank you.
Thank you.
And those are some pictures of our, of our student groups that we've had at the three sites, so. And we welcome you to come to our graduation event, which will be in May this year. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Going into our public hearings, the first one, we have deferred to a future meeting because they weren't quite ready. Item six, Affordable Living.
Item six is a legislative petition to vacate submitted by the Penellas Affordable Living Incorporated for the 45-foot wide right-of-way known as 66th Way North, lying between lots one through 15 of Block B and lots 16 through 30 of Block A, Central Park subdivision. The public hearing was properly advertised and affidavit of publication has been received for filing. Letters of no objection have been received from the appropriate parties. All interested parties have been notified as to the date of the public hearing. No correspondence has been received. The matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Thank you. We have no cards against. Do we have any questions?
Just an informational question. So there's a slide that shows the map of the parcel, the portion to be vacated. I just have a question on that.
Okay.
Andrew's on his way up.
Good morning, Andrew Pupke.
Good morning.
Division Director, Administrative Services.
Just wanted you to get some exercise and walk up there. But I wonder if you can show that slide that shows the actual map.
Is this the general location map? Are you seeing that?
That's it. So just in general, so the dotted portion is what the property owner actually owns.
Yeah, that is Penellas Affordable Living's property.
So the yellow outsides, outline section, who actually owns that?
Well, that's right-of-way, so it's.
I went through the definitions again. Who actually owns it, just in layman's terms?
It, it's owned by the respective property owners on, on either side of the right-of-way. It's, it's an easement and the county attorney can correct me if I speak incorrectly, but based upon this particular vacation, if it is vacated, half potentially will go to the property owner on the east and, and half will go to Penellas Affordable Living.
You said potentially, then?
Well, that's by order of law, so I never want to say absolutely.
So it's 50/50 to each side?
Yes.
Okay. Who has the legal responsibility to maintain that yellow portion?
Currently, the county has responsibility for the right-of-way.
Okay.
As it currently exists.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you. Since we don't have any anti-speakers, if you all would like to speak, Jack, not necessary, but if you want to, that would be great.
Good morning. My name is Jack Humbert. I'm with Penellas Affordable Living and we thank you for your consideration this morning.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions for them? Yes, Commissioner Long.
I don't have a question for them. I had a question for you, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we supposed to be using our electronic system to make the motion?
Thank you for, well, yes, and also to speak.
Well, I did hit the button for taking a motion.
It says no speakers, I guess, because you've already spoken.
Is it working?
It is.
Okay, good. That's all I wanted to know.
You're not up there, but. Try it again.
What?
Okay, great.
I'm not withdrawing my request.
That's a request to speak.
I didn't have that. I, I was over here with the motion.
Okay, that I don't have. We have a motion from, actually, I don't, we're not using that to make motions.
Just to speak.
Okay, just to speak.
Oh, just to speak.
Commissioner Long has made a motion.
I was misinformed. Please forgive me.
My favorite movie from Casablanca. My favorite line. We have a motion.
Second.
Yes, and a second from Commissioner Justice. He would show the voting. Do you got that? Trying to be good.
I am a yes.
Okay, and we are unanimous.
Item seven is a legislative petition to vacate submitted by Joseph McDonald and Alexandria McDonald for the north one-half of the 60-foot right-of-way known as Russell Avenue, lying adjacent to Lot 11, Block 5, Monday's additional, addition to Chester Villa. The public hearing was properly advertised. The affidavit of publication has been received for filing. Letters of no objection have been received from the appropriate parties. All interested parties have been notified as to the date of the public hearing. No correspondence has been received. The matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Hey, thank you. This is a public hearing, so we have one speaker in favor of the proposal.
So you have the applicant, there is a staff?
So do we want to? We need the applicant, the staff presentation first. Sorry, we'll do the staff presentation first and then you'll get a chance.
Good morning, once again, Andrew Pupke, Division Director, Administrative Services. This is a petition to vacate a 30-foot portion of an overall 60-foot right-of-way known as Russell Avenue in the High Point area that's adjacent to the petitioner's residence. This petition was before the board back in October on the 8th, and the board denied the petition without prejudice based upon a request for staff to revisit the request of the petitioners. The petitioners are seeking the petition to reduce excessive dust around their property to address safety concerns about activities along the right-of-way and to protect their property as it relates to the front area of the property. As I mentioned, this was brought before the board back in October. There was a request for staff to speak with the petitioners to look at additional options. Those discussions did occur. There were several options that were brought, brought to the petitioner's attention, including the possibility of a right-of-way utilization permit to install a driveway, either gravel, a crushed shell, or asphalt. Recommendation to perhaps put up a three-foot fence along the front of their property to dissuade people from walking across the front yard of the property. And then also, our staff was in contact with the sheriff's office in regards to the concerns that were shared with us as it relates to the, the potential crime activity in this particular area. The petitioners have chosen to bring the petition back before the board as it existed back in October. At this time, I would ask Blake to step over Blake Lyon to further detail the county's objections.
Thank you and good morning. Blake Lyon, Director of Building Development Review Services at Code Enforcement. Since you did hear a substantial amount of this in your October meeting, I will kind of go through them at a fairly quick rate and a high level of detail. And then if you have any clarifying questions, I'm happy to do that. So as you'll see on the screen in front of you, it is a 30-foot portion of the right-of-way. As we zoom in a little bit more, the area that's outlined in red is the area that's the petition to request the vacation. The petitioner's property is highlighted in the dashed orange that's there. As we zoom in a little bit more on the aerial image, you will see kind of on the left side of the screen is 58th. And about midway through that photo is an aerial photograph that is an unimproved portion of the right-of-way. It shows up on the platted easements image on the right. A little bit lower, you'll see a, a black dot on, over the subject parcel. And there's about three blocks of Russell that is unimproved with any right-of-way in terms of roadway asphalt. But as you'll see a little bit later, one of the things that we do when, when we follow the petition to vacate from a staff perspective is not only do we look, do we look at the technical aspects of it, but we certainly try to look at the overall community benefit that it provides. And so when we take into consideration the request by the petitioners, it is trying to evaluate the individual request based on and compare that with the overall broader intentions and needs for the community. So when we look at that broader community view, one of the things that becomes apparent to us from the staff perspective is you have a 1937 plat for this community and much of which is underserved by sidewalks. And because of the nature of this community, the demographics and such, walkability, bike access is paramount for that, much of that community. And people will find they're interesting. They'll find ways to do that in the most safe and convenient manner. And in this instance, you have High Point Elementary that's really close by. You've got PSTA that provides services, community, and so much of the community or many members of the community use that informal right-of-way to walk through the community and back and forth. In fact, our, this will show you a little bit, on the right side of the image here, you'll see it shows up kind of in a white, but that is the unplatted right-of-way. We do have some utilities. We've got some open ditch drainage. We've got some water lines and other things. That's the technical side of what you've asked staff to evaluate. And so we do have technical assets that are in there and we've tried to preserve those and utilize those. But this is an image of what you see of the, the unimproved right-of-way, the, the pine tree there kind of being not quite center, but give you an idea. The petitioner's property is to the left of that image. And then if you were to scan to the right, this is the drainage ditch that proceeds along the southern portion of the image. And so in looking at this and going through our process, this gives you a little bit of the timeline of the different visits and different engagement that we've tried to have with the petitioners. But as Andrew alluded to earlier, we've tried to understand what their purpose, what their intent is, and see if there's a way to find an opportunity to address and accommodate some of that. And in doing so, we have identified what we feel like are ways, this is a previous, I'm going to skip through this stuff. Our code, Chapter 154 identifies the desire to keep those block lengths short, to allow for that pedestrian activity. And we feel like this can be achieved through that overall objective, allow us to meet the, the goals for safe routes to schools and PSTA bus routes, as I mentioned. The petitioners have indicated a desire to have a little bit more formalization of that, as they, as you'll see by that red truck, they parked there. There's a central access point that serves as a driveway there. And the property to the south actually has a driveway that comes off of that and provides access to them. And we can work with the petitioners to get a right-of-way utilization permit to formalize the access to their property, whether that's through, you know, a half-curve drive or whether they wanted to return. But we can work through shell, gravel, other ways of paving it to deal with the dust control, because right now it's just kind of dirt and gravel that's out there. We can work with them to delineate their property through the appropriate fencing and other things that we feel like allows them to achieve at least some of the results that they're hoping to obtain, but still protects and preserves the public right to utilize that area and, and not privatizing a public amenity. And so these are a couple photographs throughout the years where you'll see examples of, you know, the parking that has occurred on the petitioner's property. And as you can see, they're already parking to some degree, and again, this is 2018 photo, in front of the property. We can look to formalize that and help facilitate that process a little bit more. But we do think it's important to protect and preserve the public amenity. So with that, I'll leave, this is the final slide. We think we can accommodate a portion of that through a right-of-way utilization permit, through supporting their installation of a private property line fence. And if the direction is needed, we can certainly work with law enforcement to make sure that we're appropriately patrolling that area. But we do believe from a staff perspective that it's important to protect the existing facilities and assets that we have out there and also protect and preserve the public amenity. With that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Eggers.
I almost raised my hand instead of hitting the button.
Just raise your hand and point at that thing.
Thank you for the presentation. And this, this entire right-of-way is 60 feet?
Correct.
And then we're talking about allowing the cars on properties to access that right-of-way, to exit onto the street, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Not both ways, but.
The, the current configuration, the way it's set up is you have 58ths running north and south. There is a kind of a shared driveway where the right-of-way would have otherwise been built. And so that driveway provides access to the southern property. It's a little bit more formalized. The petitioners actually use that same driveway approach to access their property to the north. It's just less formalized. It's gravelled, there, you know, that kind of thing. So what we're suggesting as a means to achieve a result is to allow them to improve that with shell, gravel, asphalt, other ways to cut down that dust that we've heard concerned about.
But there's no utility need for this right-of-way.
This is. I want to be clear that there is a utility need. There is an existing water line that runs along the northern edge of that. So right along the property line with the adjacent, or with the petitioners, excuse me, and there is an open ditch, stormwater ditch that has some conveyance on the south side. So the need for the county's assets, utility assets are on, kind of flanking on either side of the right-of-way.
Is that the drive behind your recommendation for denial? Or is it the pass-through ability for residents?
Quite frankly, it's both. We feel like that there is existing need from the, the utility side and from, from the facility side of things, but we also think that there's a broader community benefit that should be protected and preserved.
When I looked at that picture, it doesn't seem very inviting for people to walk through. I mean, we're talking about the trail, for instance, that goes through people's backyards.
Right.
The trail's set up, the grass has been cut, it's welcoming, and it's just for use of trail. This has a, this is going to have a multi-use.
Yeah.
And it's not really defined as a pass-through, so it's kind of invites kind of, I don't want to say, you know, kind of hanging around and loitering and stuff, but as opposed to just kind of passing through there. So I'm wondering how we can do a better job of making that point.
Absolutely. And, and certainly one of the things that we are mindful of and we wanted to talk about is, is people, you'll see people make those choices out of necessity or other conveniences. And so you'll see a, for lack of a better term, a little footpath that people have created because of walking through that area. But to your point, to help try to make people feel comfortable, welcome, like it's a place to be, looking at opportunities to keep that mode, keep it upwind. Eyes on the, the street is a very good way to help reduce any threat or concern for crime activity. When you start to create fences and, and other darker areas, that tends to not allow us to view that.
Yeah, I, I just think we need to be a little more proactive. If we're going to do that, then let's make it more like a path or a trail that people use to get through, not to just kind of hang out.
Understood.
I'm not looking for that, I don't think, and neighborhoods aren't looking for that. But it just seems like it's not conducive for what we're trying, what we're saying it's going to be used for, so.
Commissioner Brian Lowack, Assistant County Administrator and also liaison to the High Point community. And to answer your question, Commissioner Eggers, I'm going to place on the overhead here, this same right-of-way, one street to the east. This is a picture of what it currently looks like. And I think there's potential in this right-of-way to do something, more formalize the pedestrian access, such as this one here. And it's highly utilized by, by residents there. One of the big concerns in that community is the lack of sidewalks. And this is through a main corridor of that neighborhood. So this is something that it could potentially look like in the future, could even look better than that as well.
So these are, this, this is road access and, and pedestrian?
It's pedestrian access. On, on the, on the right-of-way, on their street, you cannot actually access, there's a ditch that would block vehicles from the east side. Vehicles would be able to access it from the west, but not the east.
Okay.
You may recall in one of the graphics I showed, that showed the unimproved right-of-way being three blocks long, so Russell being three blocks long. That image that Brian just showed is east of George Avenue, so it's 58th and then George. And so for those two easterly blocks, if you will, it's a little bit more established like you described. What we're talking about is that westernmost block and, and there's a potential to formalize that a little bit.
So what is the material that's on what Brian just showed us? Is that gravel?
I think it's gravel.
Is there any way that we can help them with gravelling that piece there, since it's not their property and?
So when somebody were to come forward, if they wanted to substantiate like a driveway to their property, they would come in and we can help facilitate that through a right-of-way utilization permit. But the actual formal improvements are, would be the responsibility of that property owner.
So who did the, the other two blocks?
On, on that portion, I'd, I'd have to research. I don't have the answer to that.
Okay. We have the applicant who would like to make a presentation in a minute.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Alzey Jeremy Donalds. I apologize, my husband couldn't be here. In regard to that last picture we saw, our alleyway has that ditch in the back, so you can't make a road like that. It's actually the alleyway right behind us, right past George. That's the street that runs behind our community. The gentleman that owned that house next to that right-of-way was Renato. He actually sold that house, because it was small, and then he moved to the one actually right behind us. It's a very big house. He got lucky. Got a good price. But he actually did all that, because he was tired of people parking in the alleyway and hanging out. So I just wanted to address that for you guys, and he kind of made it usable. I, I looked at, you know, their, I guess, what we could do to solve it. I spoke with Deputy Wilson. He is the officer in our neighborhood, which was awesome. Someone sent him to us. I don't know who it was, but thank you. He stopped by our house. We, he looked, actually looked at the right-of-way, saw everything that we've done. After speaking with him, and we have a cell phone number, which is super, so we can call him when there's an issue. We actually put a big LED sensor light out next to our property, so it lights up, so it's not so dark at night, to try to keep people away. It lights up the area for them to walk in. I don't really mind where they walk, because it's 60 feet. It's, it's quite a big area. I don't know if any of you have driven by or seen it. It's, it's quite a large space that we use to get in. We have two driveways, one in the front of the house, which they redid our house before we purchased it in '17, so it actually wasn't a driveway. They just kind of like put rock there, like park in front of your house. And then we have like a side gate, which actually has a slab of concrete where they used to park their car next to like the house. We don't use that for parking as of right now for cars, because it's tiny. But we did speak to our neighbor next door who owns a duplex, and that's who we share that entrance and the right-of-way to get in our properties. He stopped by, I guess he got the notice for this hearing. He wasn't, he didn't know about the first one. So he stopped by a couple weeks ago, talked to us. He didn't have any concerns, and, you know, we talked to him face-to-face, and we just told him like, you know, we're, we're wanting half. You guys have that half. He was, he was very fine with it. We've spoken to all our neighbors. It's the kind of relationship we have in our community, because High Point's changing, I guess you can say. It's people, when they move into these communities and they buy like an older house, or they buy, you know, a piece of property or a rundown house, right? I have a rundown house right next to mine. My house is really nice. My backyard's really nice. But then you have this house next door that's abandoned with like broken windows, and somebody just purchased it. They're gonna redo it, which is awesome for me. But everybody in that neighborhood, we all talk to each other, you know, and see what works best for us. We all look out for each other. We all want to make things better. And that's all that we're trying to do. I did bring a sketch of the property to kind of, the pictures are very hard to look at and see what you're looking at, is what I've noticed especially. So we're lot 11. Our house is right here. This entire space here is the right-of-way. This is all of this 60 feet, and it goes all the way through. The drive to this duplex is here. They have like a circle U-drive. We don't have that. So you pull in off 58th, and this is the entire area that you pull in. It's a big space. We have an oak tree on the side of our house here, and they have a bunch of trees in the front. So they kind of pull in and go right into their U-driveway, like as a turnaround, you know, that they don't have to like pull in and back out like we would have to. And then the pine tree's in there too. But most, the ditch runs right through the middle of their U-driveway in the duplex to the south of us. And it's not a wide ditch. It's a deep ditch. So it kind of just runs here, right? And then it's got their driveway that comes out, and then it runs down here. And then there's a ditch that runs this way. This is why no one can drive through our alleyway. Like they'll try to, they'll come in, and then they'll realize that they can't and turn around. So, I mean, we're just, at, at this point, there's really no rhyme or reason. It's just, I don't, I don't have to put a fence up there. I, you know, I could even put a three-foot fence out there and plant plants. Like we just want to make it look nice. Like it, it looks shabby. And, you know, we take pride in our yard. Like if I could show you our backyard, you'd see like bismarcks, coconut palms. I mean, we have like literally redone the whole thing, you know? We just want it to look nice. So we can leave our, we have a green fence up right now. We're gonna replace it to white at some point. It's very expensive. But, you know, even if we put like a little black fence and just have a little, even if it's see-through, you know? We're not looking to, we want to make the community better, but we want to stop people from parking their cars back there and doing things in their car that like were, you know, like, you're just hanging out in the dark. Like, you know, I mean, we've talked to Renato. He has like the light on. He has, there's a light pole that is, meets in the back of our two yards. And he has that on, and he, he actually, we talked to him, and he installed all LED lights and stuff too back there, so it's not so dark. We think it's great. I mean, I particularly, when these people walk through this alleyway, they wa, walk along this ditch. And if you ever come to the property, you'll see. So this, this, this line half is half of the 30 feet. This is the other 30 feet, which leaves enough access to these holes right here to clean them. Because they would pull in here and just move with their little tractor that I've seen once. And they, they just scoop them out, you know, and they go down and they turn around. You know, they'd have enough space to do that. 30 feet is enough space. People walk right next to these ditches like this through. And then they kind of made like a little bridge over this ditch back here to pop over George Street to get to the other area. So I felt like drawing it would be better. The pictures don't do it any justice. It is, it is a large area. It is 60 feet. We're petitioning for 30. Our neighbors are cool about it. We've put the LED lights out there. It makes it real bright, sensor lights. If you ever go there at night, ding, lights right up, at least in our area. Renato, he lived at the house on George Boulevard, where that area is redone nicely. He did live in that house. It was very small. He sold it. And he literally moved right across the street right behind us on George Boulevard. He planted those trees. He put up that white fence. That was there. I've talked to him. Very nice guy. He bought the house behind us. He's redoing it. I mean, the people that we live next to in our general area, we know most of our neighbors. We try to get in with our community and see, I mean, you know, you need a mower. Hey, borrow our mower. This is what we're trying to do in this community. Not make it so that like, you know, you have triplexes and duplexes where everyone's, you know, fighting. We don't want that. We're just, we're trying to make it better. We're friends with the people in our duplexes too, and the guy who owns it, Jeff, super nice guy. He owns an AC company. Lives in Beller Beach. Stopped by, saw the petition. I mean, no one has an issue with it. Everyone actually thinks it's a really good idea, and I really wish that I knew that before all this happened, because they think it's a great idea too, and they would go for it. And I'm like, unfortunately, I can't add you on the ticket, because we had to go through all this process to get here, you know? So I, I kick myself for not saying, hey, this is what we're doing, to show you that we're all in agreeance. The only guy I don't know is the one who owns lot one. He's got a lot of trees and stuff, so I don't, and it's right next to the drainage ditch, so I don't think he really cares for it that much. But the three neighbors that can see each other and know each other do. And that's really it. I mean, even with the 30 feet, where people walk, it's in the 30 feet. The drainage ditch, you have 30 feet, and it's only, you know, this little part. This back here, this is Renato's house here. He just bought this. Again, he was the one across George Boulevard who owned that little house. Jeff owns this duplex. Really nice guy. I think that's about it. I mean, I'm just trying to draw it out and explain it, and I don't know what else it would be used for. I mean, in the beginning, I was told it would be used for a public water place, which is right down the street in the same neighborhood. But reading, you know, here, I mean, we're just trying to make it better. There's no rhyme or reason. It's not being used, and if you don't want a fence there, I won't put a fence there. You don't want anything built on it. We already signed. We won't build on it. That's totally fine. We've already signed all that paperwork. There's no utilities there. I think Bright House sent us a letter and was like, hey, we're gonna have to put a cable line in there. You have to let us. And we're like, okay, and they'll make us pay for it. I'm like, okay. So I don't know. That's it.
Do we have any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, please.
Thank, thank you for coming and all the work you've put into this. I just want to understand, is it that you don't want to see any use of that property for transportation, for people walking, or you just want to see the bad behavior eliminated and make it safer?
Well, we really just want to make it safer and the bad behavior to stop. You, I, like, like we said in October, the partying and the parking and the drinking in the alley. If you make it less accessible to be a parking lot for parties, good to go, because you can't fit 50 cars in there, you know, for people to drink and party hard. You know what I mean?
It shouldn't be that anyway.
It is. December 21st, I had to call the sheriff's department five times this year, and we showed them the maps and, and said, it's considered Russell Ave. And they said, well, it's not a road. There's nothing we can do for you. And I have videos downloaded on my phone of showing all of these cars parked in there. And they did nothing. And they have this speaker that's probably the size of my front door to my house. My DJ at my wedding didn't even have such a big speaker plugged in out there, listening to music loud all night. The cops were out five different times. I called Deputy Wilson. He was like, I, I don't know what to do. I told him about, you know, the idea last time came up to make it, you know, like a walkway and, and just not incorporate it into properties. And I don't know who sent it to me, and I really appreciate it. And he also said that wasn't the best idea. And I'm sure if any of you called him, he would tell you that's grounds for more people to just hang out and sell drugs or hang out in their car and do something. I don't want to say that out.
Thank you. You answered my question. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You just, I'm not hitting the right button here. How's that?
Great.
All right.
I'm still hitting the button. I'm sorry.
The, so we have utility issue. We have a utility, our utility on there, and I'm, I'm just assuming that there would be other ways to access that utility for repair. I mean, if we put a, put an easement over it to, to be able to go in and repair issues, I'm just, that's a question. And then the idea that if we start taking these pieces away of, of right-of-way, the next person has the same right to ask for it. So whatever we do, it starts to set a precedent to do that, and it may be okay. I don't know that. I was glad to hear from Assistant to the County Administrator Lowack, talk a little bit about the, about the other, I want to call it alley, but roadway that is being worked there. And I, I would just like to see, that's a community, I think, that is, 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 is in some improving transition in some of those areas. And I think those little roads or alleys could be a, a better defined and better connectivity piece, sort of helping connect and protect and defining a community. It could be better, and we could do a better job of being more proactive on that front, so that it becomes a real pass-through feature and not a hangout park. That's not what we're looking for, I don't think. So just those kind of comments. I would be a little hesitant to, to give the right-of-way away. But on the other hand, I think if we do that, then, if we don't do that, then I think we have a responsibility to do it the right thing, the right way. So hopefully, we won't let it just, you know, not do anything going forward. So that's just a comment. Thank you.
And just to build upon that, that was Brian Lowack's effort to reach out and work with the community policing officer to, to address the, the resident's concern. There's a lot of physical things and design issues that you can do to present, to prevent access or to deter people from going back into an area and creating unsafe situations and stuff. So I think there's more that we can do with them in terms of driveway access, defining the areas to where it doesn't look like, you know, they can drive back there, and, and I think address many of the concerns that the residents raised without giving up the, without vacating the right-of-way.
Commissioner Seal?
Yes. Oh, it worked. I requested to speak. I didn't hold my hand up. And to further address her problem, which is, you know, people going back there and parking, I would think that we would be able to put up some kind of physical barriers to prevent that. And that would seem to solve really her, the main issue of, you know, of that, and still allow walking to be able to go back and access that area. And going even further, you know, which we talked about last time, you know, the safe routes to schools. You know, that's something that Deputy Wilson has been really working on in that neighborhood, is to try to provide connectivity and provide a much safer school situation for the children. So, you know, I think we need to, I know we talked that we didn't necessarily have the funding for this, but this is something maybe that we should look at FDOT funding or look at other grants that maybe we could do in order to do the Safe Routes to Schools program that we've done in other areas, where we built sidewalks and we built infrastructure to, to better the neighborhood.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Walsh?
And I used the button as well this time. I, I definitely think the McDonald's have a problem, and I appreciate them persevering in this. I just don't think vacation is a tool to correct a problem. But I certainly would hope we, we would get law enforcement to do some sustained work in that area, to send the message that that's not supposed to be used to park and party. And she mentioned a big speaker. I don't know how that even happens. Well, yeah. So we definitely have some issues, and hopefully, we can get law enforcement to be engaged in that area for a while. But I don't think the vacation is the right tool to, to address it.
Thank you. Commissioner Low?
I used the button. I know you did. I felt so proud of myself. So what I'm hearing is that we seem to have a consensus that vacation's not the correct way to go in this particular issue. But I, but I would feel a lot better voting that way if I could hear a really strong commitment from the administrator and staff that we will find a way to make this more amenable for not only the McDonald's, but the rest of the folks that live there. And I couldn't agree more with Commissioner Seal's comments about school safety and getting kids back and forth to school in a safe way, because from the activity that Mrs. McDonald spoke about, it doesn't sound like it's a really safe access for little kids to be going back and forth. So do we have a real commitment to take care of this? And not five years from now, but maybe fairly quickly?
We do. This is exactly the reason for creating the neighborhood liaisons and Brian Lowack being in the, the Highwood area. He's, he's driven around with the deputy. He's understanding the community issues. He understands the residents' concerns, and trying to bring resources to be able to solve that is, is the, the reason for the creation of the program. And I love his passion. I, I hear about it all the time, and, and I'm sure he's bugging the heck out of Rahim and others to bring resources to try to address these. So that's exactly the rea, the reason for the program. And I, I know he's very concerned about the residents' concern, and I'm sure there's solutions absent of vacation to be able to solve that.
Thank you. Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to kind of echo those, those points without getting too long. But I think if we could just get a, not necessarily time certain, but have a follow-up in 30 days or 60 days so that we know that we're moving along and it's not getting delayed too much. So, thank you.
And even if it needs to be in phases, like putting the bollards up so they can't drive through there first till we figure out how to make it a little more walkable?
Yeah, just, again, just to continue the, the theme that I've heard from the last three commissioners speaking. Yeah, I know that we're working towards, we, we've, we've spent a lot of time and energy and money developing a plan. In fact, a CRA for laymen, which we're all very proud of. And I just think this is another community that, I'm so glad that, Brian, you're on this and, and looking into it, because we have a commitment to make, and I think that's what we're looking for. A little bit more of that, kind of, what is that commitment? Laying it out, time certain. What kinds of things we're hoping to accomplish? What are we, what are we hearing from the neighborhood? That whole thing that I know you're working on, because I think it's, it's bigger picture stuff that really, these things really fit into. So I'm, I'm really looking forward to that, to that conversation. Thank you. Do we have, need a motion, or? Or she has more time, I guess.
Yes. Does, does the applicant wish to say anything else? You have a little bit more time.
Ten, 10:24.
Ten minutes. You have 10 more. You don't have to speak for 10 more minutes.
I did get Brian's email regarding what we can do. We, we came here because we, you know, the first year and a half we lived there, we had so many issues, um, with partying in that alleyway. Living there, I don't know if any of you live in High Point. I'm gonna say probably not. But, um, it just, even after talking to the neighbors, I just, I don't know. I don't see, I don't see it working that well. I mean, I, with the parking, right? I mean, like, you know, if we, if we even put, you know, plants, I mean, and we don't have a problem doing it. We don't have a problem planting it. I mean, those fishtails that were along our fence, which we saw in one of the pictures the county put up for you, we put them there for privacy, you know? Some people aren't like, you know, whistling at you while you're swimming in your pool because that was happening. Super weird and rude. But, you know, we, we don't have a problem doing it. Um, you know, I mean, in the beginning I was told, you know, this area could be built on and, you know, water treatment plant could be put in. Now it's, we want to make the gap in, in the High Point community better. But I, I don't know if anyone's really understanding what that gap is. That gap in that community, the community's changing. The community is not just an area that's slummy. I don't know how else to put that in other terms, you know? It's people coming in there that want to start families that, you know, can afford a house in the two hundred thousands now and not spend four hundred thousand dollars because the, you know, housing market is sky high right now, which is great. But, you know, they're moving in here at my age, at thirty, and going, okay, I'm gonna spend the two hundred thousand to two fifty on this house, redo it, make it nice, get my money out of it, sort of family here. You know, that's really, it's like a stepping stone. It's one of those communities where people are wanting to buy here because it's cheap enough to redo it and make it nice and have a community. Like across the street from us, there's an HOA in there, you know? It's super nice. People are doing these things and these houses are newer. They just put them in there. They're well taken care of. It's not, you know, in the back of the neighborhood, um, past George Boulevard, there's like a bunch of duplexes and things like that. We're not looking to make it hard for kids to get to school. I mean, my husband's driven the kids next door in the duplex to school because they missed the bus or something, you know? It's, we're just trying to make it better. And I feel like the solution for our sanity, especially with the parking and it's not considered actually a road, there's nothing anyone can do for us, like literally. And this has been, what, four months since I've been here last time? And I called Deputy Wilson the night of the twenty-first. He wasn't on duty. He's on duty during days, which is fine. And then we called the sheriff's office five times that night. He looked it up and he's like, they didn't do anything for you? I'm like, no. Like, they just drink, party. I mean, I'm pretty sure, like, you can't even drive a lawnmower and have a beer without getting a DUI, but hey, what do I know? You know, I just feel, we're not trying to make this difficult for the county at all. Like, if you want to build on it, I totally get it, build on it. But like, I'm pretty sure we're not gonna build on it because the one picture that was up there was from like the eighties when the house was built. I mean, the house was rundown and gross and not redone. The house doesn't look like that. One of those pictures, I was like, with the red truck, that's not our house, you know? Um, it hasn't been built on in like thirty years, you know? And it's a huge space. The biggest concern was having access to clean the ditches. That's on the other side. That's in the other thirty feet. The issue was we want a sidewalk. Well, there's, that they walk on that side, you know? That's fine. We can build a sidewalk. I just, to me, I don't, and not really the, understanding the reason of like a no. Because there's really not a specific reason. And every time I ask, whether it be by email or it's, well, we want to build on it. Well, we want to put a sidewalk. And we wanted to say, well, that's fine, but thirty out of sixty feet, we're not, you know, walking an elephant. I mean, thirty feet, that's a lot of feet for somebody to walk. And it'll make it safer because there's not people hanging out there while kids are walking to school. I have a camera system out there, you know? I, I've done all that. I put a light out there. There's, I have rings, I have Arlo's. I mean, I think I have like eight cameras all over my house at Live Beach and my phone when a squirrel runs across it, which is a daily basis. But I just, I, I think that if I was able to put even like a metal see-through fence, you know? No, you can't drive through a fence to park there. That would stop that. And then we could plant flowers out there, you know? And, and people would be able to walk through there and know, oh, okay, this is where I walk instead of the dirt path that's killed the grass from people walking through it so much. Our, our point is not to make people stop walking through there. There's kids that walk through there. There's adults that walk through there. There's bikers that go through there. I don't know how, if you go to the other end where the ditch is, they kind of made, like I said, a little whoop through the ditch. It's a gird in there, you know? Instead of jumping the ditch. I get that, you know? And then that needs to be there. But I just, I really wish that you guys could consider vacating it. Um, and like I said, if I knew then what I knew now, I would have brought all my neighbors here so you could hear everyone is on the same page about it. I really wish I could. But if, if that's something I have to do in twelve months from now, I guess that's what I'll have to do. I just, I wish that you guys would hear us in this community that we live in, that we maintain in that area, that we communicate with each other. This is what we all want. It's, it's not because I want to pay more taxes or I need more property. I have a large pool and a backyard full of coconut palms and every other exotic plant that I don't need that my husband wants and two German Shepherds that love to run around. It's just that we just want to make the community better and make the, the trash stop. That's it. And I really wish that you guys would hear that because everyone feels that way.
I think we hear you.
Okay. Well, thank you again for listening.
Um, so I think what I heard was that we'd like staff to go back and see if there's a way, even if it's not their preferred way to do this, if there's a way we can stop the partying in that right of way.
Sure. And, and what I heard today were, were four key things that, that staff will follow up on. Number one is look into, um, solutions to potentially block vehicle access past their driveway. So, um, one thing that comes to mind is, is putting in those, those bollards right there. You know, a couple of those that'll stop vehicle, uh, access. Number two, um, uh, you'd like us to look into, uh, ways to improve pedestrian access there and improvements to that right of way. Number three is engage law enforcement to make sure there's a heavy concentration of patrol in that area. And number four is we'll obviously continue to work with the McDonald's to address their concerns and work with them on any solutions we have, uh, in the right of way moving forward.
In a timely manner.
Thank you. Commissioner, hold on. Commissioner Justice?
And also, thank you. Also, it sounded like that there's a drainage issue on the east end that some of the neighbors have filled in that may need to be addressed as well so that we have drainage. And if that is cleared, that might take care of some of the pedestrian cross through there if people can't jump the ditch.
Kelly Levy, interim Director of Public Works, I just spoke with Ms. McDonald. Um, we can work with her to place bollards, um, which would still allow all the pedestrian access, but prevent people from driving back there and then, like Ms. McDonald explained, getting down there and realizing they can't turn around and then backing out and creating more problems. So we can do that. And I just asked that, you know, she work with us so that it's placed, you know, appropriately. We got to make sure that both sides can still have access to their property. But we can limit traffic back into that area, you know, to pedestrians and bicycles by doing that. Um, so we'll work with her to get that done very quickly. And I'll take a look at the ditch while we're out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Final question. I'm sorry. Brian, is, is Officer Wilson, is he a, a, a community police officer?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's.
We just have one in that.
Deputy Wilson, he's, he's the community police officer there that I work with. Uh, there are a couple, uh, different ones. Obviously, they have different shifts. Um, he doesn't work there twenty-four seven.
Okay, so we have a community police officer, one for the area, but we also have them covering back shifts as well?
Correct. There, there's, there's, I believe, three of them, two or three of them. Uh, and there's also some community police officers assigned to, um, Safe Harbor. And they, they, um, respond to issues in the High Point.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think as we continue to discuss this area and figure out how we're gonna try to continue working to improve different aspects of it, we need to continue to have that discussion as well. Make sure that we're getting enough coverage.
Commissioners, if I can add, you know, that, that is part of the larger discussion. And, and Brian has been engaged with the sheriff's office, um, regarding, you know, Safe Harbor and the entire area. And so we're addressing one particular issue, but we're looking at it as a broader community issue.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Welch, are you gonna press your button?
I, I don't have, I was gonna make a motion.
Sure.
So.
Okay.
We're not doing the buttons for motions, right?
No, I'm not.
Okay. So I would move that we deny the petition to vacate and also, um, instruct staff to address the issue um, using the four items outlined by, um, Assistant County Administrator Lowak and any other measures to address the issues brought forward today.
Second. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Welch, second by Commissioner Seal. Please bring up the voting card. Come up on that one. Okay. Does that enjoy? That's why. Okay, sorry. Item eight, consent agenda. Oh, public comment. Okay. We're at public comment. First up is David Ballard Geddes.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Chair.
Uh, David Ballard Geddes, Jr. I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. Beaten, starved, scalped, the trail of tears was an act of apartheid. All but destroyed the indigenous Indians, their culture laid to bear. Unrecognized by the establishment of this government lay slowly dying on reservations here today. The blacks stolen from Africa, inhumanely captured by mercenaries working to the establishment of this government. The Africans unjustly enslaved under a constitution declaring liberty, freedom, and happiness for all. Mostly living on the fringes of society, the Hawaiian culture is all but a memory. Predominantly the Hawaiians, their fate has no say as to the course of things set in process by foreigners who are super positioned in as their government. The indigenous people feel disembodied, disrespected, and mocked by the establishment. The once beautiful people of the islands of the Bahamas, the indigenous Indians in the Bahamas are today completely extinct, simply eliminated, genocide mostly by disease. The indigenous people of Nicaragua, Guatemala, Honduras, and El Salvador for over half a century have been driven from their homeland only to have their land besieged by the socio-economic global capitalistic interests captured by the commerce of both Great Britain and Israel hand in hand plundering the milk and honey of Central America in quest of world wealth domination, power lacking prestigious-ness of any kind. The warlords overseeing this global equation declaring that they're here and they're free to levy war, privileged and immune, tax-free in the Fourteenth Amendment, declaring themselves to be savages in the Declaration of Independence, declaring the undistinguished destruction of all ages and conditions here to murder the inhabitants of these states in the most barbaric of ages and to further enlarge its boundaries as declared, giving rise to Americana absent Christianity in its variance under the auspice of liberty and freedom. When in the course of human events, the posterity of this constitution, Americana, and the liberty for which it stands just got called out as do its purpose and its will of its intent.
Andrew Strickland?
Good morning. Happy New Year. I'm gonna be, gonna try to be less dramatic. Okay, first of all, uh, I'm one of the founding members of Save the Tides Inc. And we've been in a prolonged battle for the last seven years to not only save the Tides Golf Course, but, uh, save, uh, as much green space in Pinellas County as possible. Commissioner Welch mentioned, let's view 2020, Happy New Year, by the way.
Happy New Year.
Through a lens of purpose. Well, the people of the Seminole, Seminole community are united in their purpose to maintain our county's green space. So, uh, we appreciate that, uh, the opportunity to, uh, to continue to argue. And on that point, Bay Point, uh, I guess you folks are working with Bay Point to, uh, address that green space issue. And thank you for, for doing that. Thank you for working with that community. We support Bay Point. We support what it is you're trying to do at Bay Point. And, uh, thank you. So, moving on, um, Ron Stevens, we've gotten a lot of emails regarding the recent destruction of the clubhouse. And, uh, clubhouse is gone unfortunately. But, um, there seems to be a question as to, as regarding the habitat permit. And I guess my question is, first of all, uh, was there a habitat permit on record when the clubhouse was destroyed? Was that a valid permit? That's question A. Question B is if not, then is it okay to destroy a structure after a habitat permit has already expired? That's B. And then we've got some pictures of some runoff.
Right on top of the seal. No, farther down.
Farther down? Right there. So some concerned residents have taken, uh, some pictures of some runoff stemming from the destruction of the clubhouse. So there's one, there's two. I know we've had members reach out to, uh, Mr. Eric Vittoria. And hopefully he's checking this out. So, a lot of emails going to Ron Stevens about the destruction of the clubhouse and the runoff. Of course, our favorite bald eagle on the property. So, uh, in conclusion, I've got thirty seconds left. There's been a Facebook exchange between Commissioner, uh, Pat Kemp over in Hillsborough County and Mr. Hills. I believe somebody from Save the Tides forwarded that email, uh, that Facebook exchange, that public Facebook exchange. Uh, bless, uh, Commissioner Kemp's heart, but, uh, it's definitely something to, to look at, okay? So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up is the consent agenda. Do we have anything that needs to be pulled?
Okay.
Mister by, yeah. Motion by Commissioner Welch, second by Commissioner Eggers. Hold up the voting card, please. Thank you. Is that somebody's missing? Commissioner Seal?
Sorry. It's bad. They're cold in here. I gotta go get my blanket.
Blanket. Thank you. Okay. Item twenty-six?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six? Thirty-six. Okay. Thirty-six.
Item thirty-six is a contract for sale and purchase, um, with obligation solutions for the acquisition of the former Bay Point Golf Course located in Seminole.
Okay. Do we have any questions?
Second.
Could we get a short presentation?
We have a staff presentation, please.
Who's gonna give that? Rahim?
Good morning. Rahim Harji, Assistant County Administrator. Um, we don't have a specific presentation for the item, but I have a map. Um, I'll just pull it up and walk through it. So most of you are familiar with the location of Bay Point Golf Course. Um, our intent is to, um, do our due diligence during this contract period to, to see what the viability is to turn it into a regional stormwater park. Uh, from the preliminary analysis that we have done, uh, there's a high cost benefit, uh, associated with developing it into a stormwater park. Our intent is to, uh, design it so that it's accessible to the public and at the same time, um, treating nitrogen and phosphorus within the ponds. Um, if you have any specific questions, I'm here to answer them.
This was originally a project, so they were looking for, um, a regional stormwater, um, solution for this area. And this was part of Penny Three. Now, it's a for this area, and this was part of Penny Three, now it's a current Penny Four. So this has been in the making for years. They identified this area, it came for sale, and so this was set aside and funding was reserved for this purchase back with Penny Three dollars.
Do you know where the public access is to this? Can you point to it or?
Right there.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Is that a parking lot there or what?
It is.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Eggers.
Yeah, so this was, so this was...
Oh, I see, I lost my list.
So this is a, an area that's been looked at for a while for some type of stormwater retention and/or conveyance. I'm assuming it was being used in conjunction, or being looked at in conjunction with the golf course.
So what we have done in the past is we looked at it from two folds. One is we need to provide regional stormwater treatment within this particular area, what parcels exist in this particular area, and obviously this is one of the few that has open green space where you can provide stormwater treatment. But we also looked at it from another perspective of what type of park can we put in here? So when we did look at it to purchase, we had programmed it in under Penny Three. So we looked at it from both perspectives.
So from our perspective, we've really never looked at it as a partnership, keeping the stormwater and keeping a golf course, a golf course going there. So the idea that if we buy it, it's gonna be a passive park as far as interaction with the public goes.
That is our intent, based on the preliminary analysis that we've done, because we have to maximize the amount of area that we need to treat stormwater, but also have trails and those type of amenities for people to walk through. So that's what we have approached it as, yes.
And the dollars that I saw that were in this staffing for the project in Penny Four, I think it was over five million, was that all Penny Three?
Yeah. Most of it was in Penny Three, there might be a small portion of Penny Four, but majority of it was budgeted under Penny Three.
Does any of, has that, is the park turning it into some type of passive park use? The cost of that been factored in already?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's what I had for now, thank you.
Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a logistical note on the budget detail, there needs to be landscape so we can read it. The way it's scanned, you have to turn your head to read it. But I'm glad you included the cost benefit analysis in here, a whole lot of numbers, but bottom line, you're saying that long-term this makes fiscal sense for the county and it meets our environmental goals as well. I think that's important to say for the record, because there are a lot of other golf courses out there. But just in layman's terms, talk about why that differential between the appraised price and what we're paying makes sense.
Sure. So I will try not to be an engineer and explain.
Thank you.
We went through this in detail. I'm trying to explain this.
So, in layman's terms, the appraisal was based off of what the appraiser felt was the best use for the property, which in the appraiser's opinion is recreation, so like open space and things like that. They put a value on it of $800,000. We will be providing a recreational facility through a stormwater park. So in addition to that, we're also getting the benefits of treating pollutants that are entering our waterways. The appraisal does not take that into account. When we did a cost benefit analysis, looking at the, when we did a cost benefit analysis considering the price we are purchasing it at, it is still very highly beneficial from the perspective of treating stormwater at a cost efficient way. And the basis we use to measure that is what the Water Management District uses to rank projects that they co-fund. So it is ranked high based on that perspective. So you get two benefits. You get the recreational facilities, which is what the appraisal looked at, and you get the regional stormwater perspective of treating pollutants before they enter the waterways that we did a more thorough cost analysis on.
Thank you very much for that non-engineering explanation. I understood it. And y'all did a lot of, y'all did a lot of good work on this, so thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I do. I'm sorry.
We already made a motion in a second.
It didn't ring in?
Oh, that's true, we do have a motion in a second.
I do have a question. In the appraisal, it lists that the real estate taxes for 2014 to 2018, and I assume, you know, now 2019, have not been paid.
Yep.
So when this closes, will the taxes be paid?
The taxes will be paid by the current property owner.
It will be?
Yep.
Okay. Not by us, though.
We're not by us.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, because the tax valuation is almost $19,000 for just 2018.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Peters, second by Commissioner Long. Okay. Item thirty-seven.
Item... (applause).
I was waiting for that for a little bit.
Is that why you were...
You all were so quiet.
I've been waiting for that.
Always nice to make somebody happy. Okay, item thirty-seven.
Item number thirty-seven is a contract for sale and purchase of a parcel of land located along County Ewan Creek. This is adjacent to a county maintained creek, and this will provide us access.
Do we need a presentation at all?
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
I have a question.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Eggers.
Yeah, if somebody could maybe come up and just chat a little bit about that creek as it moves towards the west, it seems like we're doing some things on the east side of County Road One or Omaha to ensure certain stability of banks and putting it in our responsibility. To the west of that property, we've had some issues from a couple of different residents. And so I'm just wondering how the thought process is migrating, or is it as we look forward, as we look further downstream on that project, to see if there's any additional efforts the county's gonna be doing to assume responsibility, or at least to make sure that some care for residents' homes are made? So just an overall sense of the work along that creek.
Staff, somebody's coming up.
Sorry, I was like, a little discombobulated there for a minute, talking about Bollards and Mal Creeks. Kelly Levy, I know, Director of Public Works. We're actually, we've done kind of the portion that goes to the northeast, and then we're talking about that middle section, and then that south, kind of southwestern section is in the city of Dunedin. But this is actually part of the...
I'm sorry.
Curlew Creek watershed management plan. So this is actually being evaluated right now. We'll have a list of alternatives that are gonna come out of that plan for recommended improvement. So we've done some, some work in those areas.
So, just make, maybe, I got confused here. This is up in Palm Harbor. Am I, am I got the wrong, this is Bee Branch up in Palm Harbor, not Dunedin. To the west of Omaha would be County, not, yeah, not Curlew Creek, but Bee, Bee Branch Creek.
We were looking at a different map. Yeah, we have done improvements, again, we have done the improvements to the...
East.
To the east. And you can see the improvements to the, yeah, you can see those in the area. And then downstream, you know, again, I think, I'm not sure if we have a project in this area. I'll have to look into that and get back to you on that.
I'd just like to take a look at that area. We've just had a couple of residents that have expressed concerns about the stability of the banks through there. And really, our response so far has been, well, our responsibility is just to make sure that the water flows, and it's their responsibility all the way to the middle of the creek to take care of. So if there's any instability on the banks or anything else, it's a resident's responsibility. I'm just trying to make sure I understand the differentiation there and to the east of Omaha and why it's being looked at one way that, on that side, and a different way on this side, or is there another project coming? So as far as this project is concerned, I'm fine with the purchase, so.
I'm gonna lay this down here and just see if we can get a better overview. So if it's some of the concern is, so we're talking about this area up here, this is the downstream of that area, that's actually our parcel. So if they're, if they're having concerns here, then that would be something we could address.
West of Omaha.
West of Omaha.
So if you see that picture, if you bring that picture back up...
Sure.
That road there that you see, I believe, is Omaha. It's a north-south, no, no, keep going the other way you were.
Fifteenth Street.
That road right there...
Yep.
Is Omaha. So there's a creek that continues...
Yep.
And that's the one I'm talking about.
Yeah, okay. So we'll have to check into land rights, easements, all that type of thing.
And see what the condition is and, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? We have a motion by Commissioner Welch, second by Commissioner Peters. Okay. Item thirty-eight.
This is a lease agreement with Palm Harbor Community Service Agency for the Palm Harbor Library. This is a new lease that will assign future facility capital improvement replacements to the county.
Move approval.
Second.
Do we want a staff presentation?
I don't need one, but do you want a request to speak to make the motion? Do you want the motion button? Just verbalize the motion.
No, just verbal motions.
All right.
We tried to press the button.
I have a question.
Just asking.
We have a question. Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, I just, I did not unfortunately get to the lease itself, so just a quick question on what we're defining as capital cost. My understanding was that it was really the shell of the building, which includes the roof and the shell, and the systems that come into that building. Water, water sewer, air conditioning, all of that. But I just wanna make sure that that's my understanding, so.
You are correct, Commissioner, based upon other agreements that we've talked about recently, particularly as it relates to fix-it, it'd be the same type of capital improvements, the roof, the air conditioning, the building envelope, those types of systems or parts of the building.
Any capital inside the building, because you define, anything done inside the building is gonna be the responsibility of the fix-it organization.
It would depend on...
They move walls around, they tear a wall down, they build another wall, those kind of things. I'm assuming those capital expenses within the shell are gonna be still the fix-it responsibility, but that's what I'm wanting to make sure that I, that's, okay.
Correct.
Then there was, there was a, I just had a comment about the electrical recharging, and then we got some emails yesterday about this electrical recharging that Duke Energy is bringing to Pinellas County. So the rationale behind Duke Energy's not charging for that, are we, are we responsible for the electrical consumption of these stations, the Pinellas County?
We are.
Number one. So they're putting the capital asset in.
Correct.
We're making it a quote "freebie" for the users of electrical power for their cars.
That is correct.
And the rationale behind that?
Well, that was a decision made probably within the last year, and the rationale was that the cost for the electricity would probably far outweigh the cost of doing all the transactions related to receiving the funds from the provider, and there's actually a third party that goes along with Duke Energy, putting that through our process and receiving those funds.
I'm sure somebody did that. Could you just send that to us, that study that shows that comparison? That would be, that would be great. I mean, just as it relates to our gas tax fund in the county that's in trouble, and we're trying to figure out ways to put more money into that. The users of non-electric cars are paying for it through the gas prices, and the electric cars obviously still wear and tear on the system, are not paying for that part of it. So there's still, there's a way to, trying to figure out how do we all share in that cost? I just wanna make sure that people that are using this, why, I just wanna make sure I understood the rationale for the free use of it. So I think you've given me one, if you could just give that report to me, that'd be great.
Sure.
Thank you. It's the only question I had.
Unfortunately, there's not enough electric cars to make it a lot. Any other, Commissioner Welch, sorry.
Thank you. So just to follow up on that, how expansive is our implementation of free, so to speak? Because somebody's paying for it.
We have eight sites in the county. When Duke originally approached us, we identified a number of sites and finally landed on eight sites which were appropriate for the use or the installation of the charging stations. And there was a variety of variables that were associated with that, but primarily the cost associated with the installation, how far the charging station was from the electricity related to the building, was there gonna be a transformer that needed to be involved in the installation, because they needed it to be cost neutral for them.
So those eight will be free to any user?
Beg your pardon?
Those eight chargers will be free to any user of an electric vehicle.
Correct. The only charging stations that aren't available to the public, which came out in the press release, are those that are at the public safety campus, because we installed those in the garage, and the garage is behind the secure fence. And again, the reason behind putting it there is the proximity to the available electric. We could not do it in the public parking area.
Okay. So I'd like to see that analysis. Could you send that, the analysis to everyone so we can see it?
Sure.
So, but do we have a policy saying that those stations are gonna be free going forward? Do we have a policy, or was it just for those?
No, there was not a policy. I don't know if Mr. Burton wants to...
Yes, Mr. Burton.
And we discussed that. And so when we come up and we had a great opportunity to work with Duke, we went forward with that, because it was at eight independent locations rather than putting out a bank of charging stations. So I think it's something we need to revisit, but administratively, it was, you would spend more money and time than you're gonna get back in the electricity. But if this has a broader application, I think we need to revisit that at that time.
And we are starting to get historical information, if you will, or usage information from Duke as these stations are being used. So we can also take a look at that information and see how the consumption is happening, was the cost of the county related to that, and that would further inform your decision, I would think, to either continue to have them be free stations or give some consideration.
I think it's a great idea, if I can follow up, I just wanna know, ten years from now, what our policy approach is, is, in the budget, is there a single line item or activity capturing the cost of that electricity? How are we capturing the cost?
We're capturing the cost on the Duke Energy bills, they break that out separately for us.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you to staff for all the hard work getting this lease put together. I know it's been, we've been talking about it for a couple of years, and it takes time to kind of define the scope of the work, but I really do think for our residents that this is the right way to do it, and let the organizations that are up there invest the dollars inside that building and to services for our residents. And I think that, I think that's great. The, replacing the roof on that library, for instance, was gonna be about $325,000, and they had had a lot of fundraisers for that, and had raised all of, I think, about $25,000. It's just a tough thing for a small organization to accommodate, and plus, it's our asset, and we wanna make sure that it's preserved. Anyway, great work on putting it together.
You're welcome. I'm sure you know that there's a great story behind that library. I did some history, did some investigation in preparation for this item, and it's terrific how the community came together to form that library.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Long?
Yes, and I just wanna say, great job on those eight charging stations coming on the back of the Resiliency Conference. It just tickles me to know that we're involved in that with Duke, and I think maybe going into the future, to Commissioner Welch's point, I think we'll see a lot more of those kind of things as we move forward, and it's good to see that we're getting, doing our effort to reduce the carbon footprint. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we have a motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Welch. Okay. Unanimous, item thirty, item thirty-nine.
This is a resolution dedicating a portion of county-owned property as public road right of way for along Clusterman Road.
Move approval.
Second. Okay. Questions?
Yeah.
Commissioner Eggers?
I'm sorry, I have no problem with it, but in the, in the staffing behind it, it talked about something else coming up, a piece of property that we're gonna sell.
Correct.
And so, and I know that has nothing to do with this effort, but I was wondering on the map if you could point that out, and what that property is, and what property is possibly getting us $13 million. At least that's the way I read it. So I was just curious if somebody could point...
Kelly or Raheem?
...property out.
Raheem Harji, Assistant County Administrator. Let me just clarify, point to Commissioner Eggers. So what you're doing with this particular item is dedicating a portion of county-owned property as right, as...
Right of way.
Right of way. What you will see in a future item is a piece of property for sale, a sale that we will be bringing to you for $13,000, not $13 million.
Oh.
That makes me feel better. So let me just pull up the map real quick.
I feel better with $13 million.
Oh, yeah. You know, I think what confused me is that little comma after the thirteen six, so my apologies.
Very expensive property.
Okay. I said, that's a big piece or a really rich piece of property, but I was curious what it was. You don't need to go any further. I'm sorry. Thirteen six thousand, thirteen thousand six hundred, I've got my questions answered, so.
It's, um, there's an exhibit in your staff report.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion by Commissioner Welch, second by Commissioner Seal. Unanimous. Item forty.
Item forty is a term extension and increase to the agreement with Bright House Networks for metro ethernet-wide area network services. There was a staff write-up and, and further explanation that was provided to you, giving you kind of the history and the growth of that contract. There are staff available to answer any questions that you have.
Move approval?
Commissioner Seal?
Got a question?
Yes, I do, thank you. Okay, um. I'm going to the traffic fiber and FDOT. Some of you all weren't here back when we approved the extra one-cent sales tax on gas, and it was dedicated to the ATMS, and part of the whole ATMS project was putting in fiber optic cable as we put in the cable for the ATMS project system. So I would like to get a map of that, of where it is at the present time, and our goal at the time was to make us self-sufficient so that we could operate our own fiber optic cable system and not be paying vendors except for as a backup or as something else. It also goes to years, I think this has been replaced along the way, but there was copper cable that was used in Clearwater and other places, mainly Clearwater, to operate their traffic system, and they were paying costs for that to outside vendors. And the goal, again, was to try to make us connectivity and also provide fiber optic connection to the St. Petersburg Traffic Control Center, as well as the Pinellas County Traffic Control Center. St. Pete was going to be the redundancy piece and the backup piece, and so I'd really like to know that we have made some good progress. It's obviously much faster speed, so it's advantageous for us to capitalize on this as much as possible. So not only would I like the current map, but I'd also like to see where we intend to finish laying out the cable. We also had talked about connecting to the Pinellas County School District and possibly the school system with the goal, again, of creating kind of a county government, county of governments, fiber optic system. So I kind of wanted to put that all in perspective, why I have asked the questions on this agenda item. The other piece is, you know, I, I have heard kind of in the background that DOT, FDOT had the moratorium on us allowing them to co-locate within the system. I worked on that really hard, and I never get a definitive answer really from what I need to ask FDOT. You know, is there a why? Is there a, you know, a reason, in other words, that we're not doing this any longer? Is there a way to rectify this? Is there, you know, it's, it's important. I mean, it's a good partnership when you're working with FDOT to be able to lay this cable, this fiber optic cable at the same time. So that's, I'm going to approve this, but I'd really like us to work on this. You know, it even goes to, you know, years ago, we had talked about trying to be our own, you know, Wi-Fi county and partner with the cities, and, you know, maybe we need to be looking at the larger issue of the 5G and, you know, other things so that we can be as progressive as we possibly can be, so.
There's a lot there.
Sorry, this is history lesson.
It is a certainly a history lesson for me, I think for Raheem too, predates to him. So I think he can address some of the questions, but I, but I think it would require some staff work.
That's right, I understand.
To be able to come back, but maybe.
Not expecting answers today, I was just kind of laying it out for everyone as I started contemplating this and seeing the answers to my questions and seeing it divided, it really, it really was a good memo from Jeff, and, and I'm sure you had input, Raheem, and so.
So, Raheem Haji, Assistant County Administrator, just to clarify a quick point, Commissioner Seal. We, um, when we install a fiber network on our roadways and we pay for a hundred percent of the cost, and we don't get cost share from either state agency or federal agency, we can use that network for whatever we want. So we have used it for non-transportation things like connecting buildings. Where we run into a little bit of a challenge is when we have cost share from the DOT, so they, through grants, or we install it on a DOT corridor. There is a provision which does not allow non-transportation uses of the fiber and the conduit that was installed. However, in the last couple of weeks, we have made a lot of progress with the DOT in getting that changed.
Okay.
So we have been working with David.
Is it a state statute that prohibits it? I mean, because why did they allow it before and then stop?
I couldn't tell you why they allowed it before, but there's.
And it was such a rumor out there that I never could really get a firm answer.
So we're getting, actually, we've been working with David Gwynn at the DOT, who's been very, very supportive of the county's position on using it for non-transportation purposes, if there's capacity to do that. In most of our system, we have capacity to do that. We are working with him and his central office because they have to do it as a statewide change, not just a local district change.
Okay.
So they're in the process of moving that along, and he understands the urgency and is moving there quickly. In concert, we have the project down on Thirty-Fourth Street, the property appraisers' building, that's under construction right now. We are doing a separate MOU, we're working on a separate MOU with the DOT, specific to that location, because obviously the conduit on Thirty-Fourth is in a DOT corridor. So we've got a lot of traction in the last couple of weeks, but we'll pull that all together and bring you, bring it to you with a map that you requested.
Thank you. I'm glad you're making progress, and.
I just, I have to shout out to David Gwynn.
I'm sure the T-Bird meeting with Commissioner Long, and I can reiterate our support for this.
Well, yeah, if I may, if I may, Madam Chair, I just wanted to say that on Thursday morning, some of us have an appointment with Secretary Tebow, and it might be an opportunity to talk to him just a little bit about where we are, number one. And number two, given your vision of what you spoke about with regard to a county-owned county system, it seems to me with twenty-four, we are unique in having twenty-four municipalities within our county. I don't know why we wouldn't have some kind of a seamless hookup for all of the municipalities to be working off of this system as well, because surely some of those little teeny cities can't afford this kind of an investment. Just a thought.
Well, if you really look at, I mean, okay, I'm now venturing down a path I don't know the answer to, but if you really thought about it, if we owned our own fiber optic system, we could actually charge for it, I think.
A fee, a utility fee.
It's a utility, right.
It's something to talk about or think about.
I mean, I don't know legally whether we can, but it's something that we should think about.
Let us, let us kind of staff that. There, you certainly can, you can do it yourself, you can, you can control that by contract. So there's lots of ways of addressing that, there's many other places that have done that. I don't know where we're at. Certainly, that's something we can.
Public utilities might have something to say about it.
We can research that and bring that back to you.
Public Service Commission.
Point, question.
Commissioner Welch?
Yeah, I feel a workshop coming on.
We're good in August.
No, very good questions, but that's going to be one heck of a map, and, you know, the issue of municipal Wi-Fi has been talked about for a while, there are a lot of free public Wi-Fi out there, and now I think it changed the dynamic. But back to this, just to make sure I'm looking at it correctly, and I'm not going to date myself and go back to when you had wiring in your house for your phone, but it kind of reminds me of the wiring in your house within the county is what we're building, but you still need that internet provider. I don't think we've ever talked about being our own internet provider, and I see Jeff in the back, so correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. CIO.
It's above our pay grade.
The piece we're, we're talking about now is the internet connectivity. Help me understand where we are. Big map, Jeff.
Hi, Jeff Roors, CIO for BTS. We'll always have to have some connection out to the outside world, which is really where your internet service provider comes in. So even if we did operate a substantial fiber network within the county, there would still be a need for a carrier to extend that network out to the rest of the world. Currently, we, we maintain two internet service providers at all times for redundancy purposes and load balance across those. So that's always going to remain a need, because otherwise, you have to have some connection to the outside world. But certainly operating capacity and, and being able to leverage the higher capacity of your own fiber is significant. It's a significant resource. We run tens of gigabits across dark fiber, but we can't pay for that type of bandwidth on a, on an ongoing basis for a lot of sites, so where we have to actually pay a carrier.
Dark fiber, please.
Oh, sorry. Dark fiber, the fiber you own or, or have control of, and you can actually control the, the electronics on both ends of it, so you can, you're, you're dictating how much capacity that fiber is providing you. Versus when you lease a circuit, you're actually subscribing for a service, much like you would at your home, a hundred megabits or fifty megabits, or, you know, you're subscribing for a fixed service and the carrier is handing that off to you. When you have your own fiber, you put the electronics on the end of it, and it's really up to your electronics how fast you go. So that's a big difference. We can run tens and twenty gigs per second across dark fiber that we own.
Commissioner Seal, just to answer one of your questions, too, we do have connection to St. Pete and Clearwater, which have their traffic management centers. So there, that connection exists today, but we'll summarize a little of that in a response to you.
Yeah, I was also going to echo that and say that in addition to being connected from a transportation control, we are also have a connection with City of St. Pete via that fiber that allows for backup of our 911 systems between each of us. So that's also being leveraged across that fiber connection to St. Pete.
Just one other.
Yes, please.
We have fiber connections in North County?
We have fiber up Curlew, up McMullen Booth, Curlew, there's, there's a lot of fiber in North County as well.
Okay. Looking forward to seeing that map. Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, the, the thing that you just touched on was one of the questions, and then I wanted to thank Commissioner Welch for his question, because I was, I was trying to go down that path but wasn't being able to formulate the question the right way. And then making sure that they're always communicating with us in layman's terms is really helpful, so, thank you, appreciate that.
Actually, I was thinking there were an awful lot of acronyms in that whole thing.
Yeah.
There are people in the public who have no idea what you're talking about. I only have half an idea what you're talking about.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Welch. Need a second. Someone, please. Second from Commissioner Peters. Okay, item forty-one.
This is a resolution approving the issuance by the Housing Finance Authority for, for Pinellas County multi-family housing revenue bonds to finance a residential rental housing project in the amount of twenty-one point six million. This would benefit the Lexington Club Preservation.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Seal. Do we have any questions?
Just clarifying, this is inclusive of staff's recommendation regarding the land trust fund.
Well, that's a separate application for the land, for the.
No, it's just for the multi-housing revenue bonds.
This is just for that.
But includes the fifth bullet, where staff is not recommending land.
They've submitted a separate application of which, that'll be looked at separately, correct.
And I'm not favorably inclined towards that.
Staff would agree with that.
Okay, great. Okay, we have a, you got the motion in second? Yes, you did, okay. Missing somebody? There you go. Motion, or unanimous, item forty-two.
Under item number forty-two, I am recommending that you approve staff's recommendation on the proposed settlement as set forth in the confidential memorandum of today's date.
Move approval? Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Peters. That's unanimous, item forty-three.
Similarly, in forty-three, I am recommending that you approve staff's recommendation on the proposed settlement, again, as set forth in the confidential memorandum of today's date.
Move approval? Second. Again, a motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Peters. That's unanimous, item forty-four.
Forty-four is another proposed settlement where I am again recommending that you approve staff's recommendation as set forth in your confidential memorandum.
Move approval? Second. A motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Peters. That is unanimous, item forty-five.
Okay, this one is different. We are recommending that you authorize litigation in the case set forth in your agenda. This is a case of housing discrimination that was investigated by your Office of Human Rights.
Move approval? Second. Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Peters. Okay, that is unanimous. Do you have any reports?
I have no reports.
Mr. Burton?
I have one report. This concerning, concerns solid waste recycling and a recent issue that was, that occurred with Safety Harbor. The issue of recycling has been discussed with our various Lake, our Pinellas County communities for some time. And so this isn't a new issue. They were, they did discuss this as part of the technical advisory committees, and they've looked at several solutions. Within the solid waste plan, they, they looked at it at three to five years, really looking and breaking down the, kind of letting some of the market issues resolve themselves prior to looking at that. With the recent discussion about Safety Harbor sending the recyclables, which they voted not to do, to, to, to our waste energy facility, we recommend that we move that discussion up and go ahead and bring the technical advisory committee or the technical management committee back together to conduct domestic and international market research of the mixed recycling, look at the markets, assess the current recycling practices for each municipality, collaborate with them to develop standard lists of, that simplifies what we can actually recycle, and then also to conduct a review of whether or not a publicly-owned regional material recovery facility would be needed, and the various financial analysis for each one of those. So I would ask that you direct the solid waste management, solid waste technical management committee to undertake those efforts. We'll bring back to our report at the conclusion of that review for further discussion.
Yeah, move staff's request.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Eggers, second by Commissioner Welch. Somebody's missing, thank you.
That's all the reports I have.
Okay, and under County Commission, we have an appointment to the Historic Preservation Board by Commissioner Long.
Yes, I would respectfully request that you please approve Mr. Jeffrey Brown for the Historic Preservation Board. I think his resume is included in this appointment, and it's, he's an, I met him, we had a lovely discussion. He's a young man incredibly articulate and very excited about being able to participate on this board, and he lives in Crystal Beach, and so I hope you'll agree that this is a great appointment for us.
Like him, second.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Eggers. Thank you, that is unanimous.
Thank you. I have a couple of words.
I have a couple of boards. I'll bring it up under mine. Do we have any new business? See, I have new business then. I would like to appoint Commissioner Eggers as the alternate to the canvassing board for the March 17 election. Yes, I need your approval to do that.
Need a motion?
Yes, I do.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Welch and Commissioner Long. Also Mayor, okay, that's unanimous. Also Mayor Christman would like to be appointed as the TDC representative of the city of St. Petersburg, and I guess we have to approve that. Thank you, Commissioner Justice. Move approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Justice to appoint Mayor Christman.
Debate and discussion? No.
Sorry, I shouldn't have asked.
No, I'm just kidding. I know he'll appreciate that.
He will.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I, on that.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Commissioner Justice.
And we have, I don't think we've ever, because I don't think most of us knew, not had the cities, the two cities that are represented, their choice for appointment. I brought it up at the meeting simply because there's so many times that we, this is how we've always done it.
All right.
Just, it's always good to remember what the statutes actually require.
Well, thanks, thank you for keeping us on track.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Justice. Commissioner Seal?
I, yes, I just actually received an email from Keith Overton asking about, I guess no one's been in communication with him, that he is no longer going to be on the TDC because he was asking about that.
All right, I thought Mr. Zoss had talked to him, had had several conversations with him.
So could we make sure that?
This is the information that I got from, from Michael.
That someone has been in communication and he understands the rationale why.
Okay.
I mean, that's how, I mean.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
He does understand the rationale why?
Who are we talking about?
I don't know.
Neve Overton.
He had a letter from the chair saying why.
But I mean, I'm happy to call him. It's just that I think we need to communicate by phone or in person or something.
Okay.
Out of respect for his work on the TDC.
I will do that, yes.
My second.
I do a letter to you.
I only have one other quick item, which is I was talking with an LPA member yesterday and it's, I'm just kind of curious if attendance is a problem at the LPA. I kind of gathered that not everybody's coming and so we may want to talk to our individual appointments and reemphasize that it's important that we have, that's one of our most important boards that we have and their recommendations are very weighty to us when we are looking at land use and the other decisions that we make. So if this is a, an issue, and I don't know for sure it is, it's just was mentioned that people are absent, that we.
Well, maybe we could get a list of the folks that aren't attending so that we know.
You make the appointment.
Right.
Right, but we don't know. I mean, I'm not there every month to know if they're attending or not.
We can certainly get you a staff report.
Yeah.
Commissioner Welch?
So just three quick comments. First condolences to Brian Lowack and his Clinsim Tigers. I know that was, sorry for your Brian. Secondly, I wanted to just acknowledge the Clearwater Urban Leadership Coalition. Thank you for acknowledging them. They are doing great work. I attended a meeting about a month ago. They probably had 60 people there.
Wow.
Really interested in moving Clearwater and Greenwood forward. And last thing, I just want to thank Commissioner Long for the outstanding sustainability summit. I mean, just what I was able to learn from the first day that I attended from the folks in Norfolk and Miami Beach, very applicable here. And I just want to thank you for your leadership. You had that room full of folks from across the region.
The world, really.
Absolutely. And I just wanted to thank you for your great work on that.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Long?
Oh, I just wanted to remind everybody about the law enforcement dinner coming up. The tables are going quickly. Thank you, Commissioner Gerard, for getting a table for the members and I hope you all participate. Thank you.
Right, and that table is available to you all, so please let Whitney know if you're coming.
Thank you.
Also, I wanted to remind people about the opening on the TDC. We are accepting applications. If you know somebody that would like to serve, please have them go online. And if there's no further business, we are adjourned.
Wait, thank you.